March twenty eighth and asked for her real.
Jacobson, Fanoukian.
Here.
Markort.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Moving to our first consideration, we have long-term infrastructure planning, the Peace Road widening project. I'll turn to city engineer Laskowski.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. Well, I'm waiting for the presentation to load here. I'll just give you a brief background on kind of the Peace Road widening project. It's a three-phase project and it ties in to long-range planning very nicely. So, the importance of long-range planning for infrastructure is that it can save you money in the long time, long time term. So, if we think about the Peace Road project, when it first started back in about two thousand three, two thousand five, my predecessors, the city engineers at that time, recognized that this is going to be at some point a five, five-lane road coming through Sycamore and up through Route sixty-four. And as a part of that plan, what they did is they had placed the traffic signals at Fairview and at MACOM wider outside the roadway. So, if you're coming off of I-88 and you're heading north on Peace Road, what you're going to see is if you look to your right, the masked arms for those traffic signals are actually set quite a distance off the edge of pavement. And the reason that they did that back in two thousand three and two thousand five at Fairview and MACOM respectively, is because they realized at that time that this road is going to be bigger at this point, and that's going to be an improvement that saved the next phase of this project some money. So, they're not going to have to relocate these traffic signals to a new location. And that kind of ties into the three phases of this Peace Road project now that we have planned. And it shows that there is some importance to long-range planning and basically planning for the future of the infrastructure of the city. So, some of the important reasons, I'm going to reference the PowerPoint that I have on my phone right now until this one comes up, is the importance of long-range planning is a result of both the capacity of the roadway and the, it's important for capacity, access, and safety. And so, if we think about capacity on Peace Road, what that means is we want to be able to accommodate future growth, future economic growth in that area, and convey traffic from I-88 all the way north into Sycamore to their industrial park. It's a very important corridor for transporting goods and commerce. So, when we have a two-lane section of road at I-88 and Fairview and MACOM, and then it expands into a four-lane road, you're not necessarily maximizing the surface area of the roadway. So, it's kind of a bottleneck in that area. And for that reason, it's important to add capacity to the roadway. And another reason why it's important to have, have longer term, long-range infrastructure planning is because of the safety aspect. So, what I'd ask you to consider is think about like a time when you were driving off of Peace Road and, or driving on eighty-eight and exiting north on Peace Road. So, when you come up the hill, you pay your toll, and then you're looking back to your left, and you're kind of craning your neck because there's a bridge there and you're looking up. So, traffic coming across this bridge at that point is going about forty-five miles per hour. And that could be something that can be a little bit concerning if you're starting from a dead stop and trying to merge into this one lane of traffic. So, the first phase of this Peace Road widening project would be adding an additional lane over at this location from I-88 north to Fairview. So, if you think about it, what the intention would be is when you're merging off of Peace Road, you would have your own dedicated lane that you would merge into, and there'd be no conflict with the traffic that's coming over the bridge at that point. So, it provides you a safer, safer opportunity to get onto the roadway and then down the road merge. So, along with capacity and safety, there's also the access component that this Peace Road widening project would entail. And that includes identifying other modes of transportation. So, specifically, I don't necessarily mean adding tons of driveways along Peace Road for access. What I'm talking about is like a bike path up and down Peace Road that would provide access to other citizens that aren't necessarily using an automobile as their main, main type of transportation. So, including a bike path along Peace Road may provide individuals working in the industrial park the opportunity to travel down, down Peace Road, down MACOM, and then either go to work at Three M or maybe the Target facility or Nestle. So, taking a look at then the project, the Peace Road widening project itself, I envision it in three phases. And the first two phases are already programmed through the DeKalb-Sycamore Area Transportation Study, our MPO. And the first phase of this project is that phase that I had mentioned going from Fairview, from I-88 to Fairview. The cost of the project is about one point four million dollars in sum. Now, the important thing to recognize about utilizing STU funds or federal funding is that this is really a bargain for, for the city of DeKalb because what happens is this funding is leveraged at, in a twenty percent, eighty percent match. So, a one point four million dollar project is actually going to cost the city two hundred and eighty thousand dollars because the federal government is going to be picking up the cost of that eighty percent. So, it's one of those things, when you think about it, you know, we do have a lot of roads in town that require a lot of street maintenance right now. And those are projects that are certainly on the radar, that we're definitely taking care of with the TIF funding and MFT funding. But when we have this opportunity to leverage funds at an almost four-to-one ratio, it's important that we take advantage of those opportunities to really use the financial resources we have to the best of our ability. So, that first phase that I had mentioned, coming from I-88 north to Fairview, would be about one point five million dollars in total, and it's programmed to start in about fiscal year nineteen. That's when the transfer, that's when it's on our transportation improvement plan. Now, the second phase of that project picks up from the place where that, that phase terminated, which would be Fairview Drive, and then it continues to widen the road to Route thirty-eight. And at that point, we're still adding two lanes of traffic. The project is a lot longer distance, so it becomes a lot more expensive. It's now five point six-six million dollars to do that entire stretch of roadway. Now, again, this is one of those projects that we brought before, DSAS, the DeKalb-Sycamore Area Transportation Study. And this group recognized that this project is having a significant regional benefit, not only for our member organizations that partner with us in Cortland and Sycamore, but also for DeKalb. Because now, this project is going to complete, that phase will then complete the road widening from I-88 all the way to thirty-eight. And the other member organizations find that as a benefit because they're, we're getting traffic flow conveyed at a good clip now with the added capacity all the way up to Sycamore. So, since this organization then again recognized this as being a regionally beneficial project, they, they chose to fund it at the same level that the first phase was funded. So, eighty percent of the funding again is going to be coming from the federal government, and twenty percent of the funding would then be coming from the city of DeKalb local match, typically a motor fuel tax-type fund. And from that point, the, the total project is going to be that five point six-six million dollars. But again, we're getting that, the federal benefit out of that with the leveraged funding sources. So, what's important to recognize about the funding though is the timing. And so, this project isn't going to happen overnight. The, this project would be funded or programmed to occur in twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five. And the reason it's a big window is we're not quite sure exactly how the federal government's going to be funding the transportation bill at that time. We do know it's programmed, we know the funds will be available, but it's just a matter of when that project's actually going to hit. And now, the third phase of the project is going to be the intersection improvements at Route thirty-eight. So, this would complete the project, and essentially what this project would do would, it would be the widening on the north side of Route thirty-eight, and then it would be any intersection improvements that would be necessary as a result of the widening project, but also as a result of any development that might be occurring in the area. So, at the time when a developer came in at the southeast corner of Route thirty-eight and Peace Road, the Shodin development that was proposed at that time, there was an intersection design study that was performed, and that study recognized that there should be, based on the traffic projections that they found at that time, it looked like that there would have to be some intersection improvements that would include some additional turn lanes, left turn lanes and right turn lanes. So, the overall cost that we estimate right now is that that project for the intersection improvements and that last section of widening would be about four point five million dollars. Now, that phase of the project right now is largely unfunded. There is some language that indicates there may be some private participation in with that project as well. However, this is, highlights kind of the importance of this long-range planning because this project is probably out in the area of maybe twenty twenty-five right now. So, it gives us enough time to locate these additional resources to plan ahead and make sure that we have a plan when the time comes to address those improvements. And so, that kind of brings me to the next portion of the presentation, which is this opportunity that we have identified. It's through the Illinois Department of Transportation. It's called Economic Development Program, Reimbursement Program. And what this program is, is a program that IDOT offers annually. There's fifteen million dollars allocated to this program. And what it allows municipalities to do is apply for this funding in the sense that up to, up to four million dollars. So, if there was a project that costs four million dollars, the state would fund fifty percent of that project, and the local match then would be the remaining fifty percent. So, the reason why I think this is exciting is because we have the opportunity of using the funding that we're already leveraging to leverage more funding. So, let's say we have a four million dollar project, and that project is, we are now responsible for two million dollars to that project. Well, we already have a one point four million dollar program, project funded in the Phase One Fiscal Year Nineteen project of the Phase One widening projects of Peace Road. So, if you think about the, the project we have through DSAS, which is one point four million dollars, if we apply that to that grant, the Economic Development Program, we can leverage up to two point eight million dollars and essentially double the money that we're already, that is already being leveraged. If we locate another six hundred thousand dollars, either a local match or private contributions, we could then leverage that full amount of four million dollars. Excuse me. And the benefit of that is not only that we're leveraging, already leveraged funds, but it'll allow us to make the project occur sooner. So, we can bring it, we're not, no longer waiting till twenty twenty-five. We may be able to cheat this project up to twenty twenty or around that, that timeframe. So, talking a little bit more about the Economic Development Plan or Program, there's certain eligibility requirements, requirements that are, are a part of this. And those include kind of demonstrating the need for it in various ways. So, we're trying to, what IDOT looks for is to make sure there's compatibility with the current existing conditions in the future project. And a project like this where you're just widening an existing road, it fits very well with the criteria that the city is, or that the IDOT's looking for. And where it becomes kind of important for, for the city council to get involved is endorsing that application. So, what IDOT likes to see is once, once we submit an application or once an application is presented to the city council, they like knowing that, okay, the city council's on board with this, and they're willing to either, and they're willing to locate that local match funding for the project of the size. So, in future meetings, we'll probably be going into more detail about that program application. You'll have another opportunity to consider it and learn more about it. And kind of the next steps then, where we're going from this point in my presentation into where we're headed in the future is, is we found that Fairgram is a local consulting engineering firm out of Rochelle, and they've prepared these applications in the past and have been very successful with them. So, we're looking at partnering with this, this private group to prepare the application and, and submit it to IDOT with the partnership of the city. And I should mention that another important component of this program is that it's required that we get private partnership, which means as part of economic development or economic, or stimulating the economy, IDOT likes to see that the money that they're putting into a project is getting a return as well. So, what they ask of us is to demonstrate that private industries, most likely in the industrial park, either Three M or Target, are retaining or creating jobs as a result of, of the infrastructure improvement. So, with a private, a public-private partnership similar to that, and with the assistance of Fairgram and the efforts that city staff is going to put into this application, we hope to bring before city council a successful application in the future. So, I think I covered everything that was in my PowerPoint presentation. I apologize I didn't have exhibits for you this time, but if you have any questions regarding the presentation, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Alderman Fanoukian.
John, you talked about the segment of the tollway from, or the segment of Peace Road from the tollway to thirty-eight. What about that, still the one-lane stretch that goes up and to the bridge on, over the U.P. tracks? Is that part of this, or would that be another phase, or what?
Sure. So, that would be a part, we're anticipating that would be part of Phase Three, as part of those intersection improvements.
Thank you.
Alderman Baker.
A little background on, on that. We had a consultant, our consulting firm, and I think in the one or two years, this was after Patty Daly, this was the newer one. This was the project they brought forward to us. It was about a one point seven million dollar federal grant, and unbelievably, that council said no because we had to spend three hundred thousand or three fifty out of our general fund. I don't think, nobody is up here right now that said no to that. But I screamed, I couldn't believe it. But it was back when they were trying to figure out how to hold the line on how much we were spending on the police station. And I really think that that may be something, if you go into the archives, you might be able to find out if maybe we could still go back and do that. Because that might be another source where we wouldn't have to wait on that part of it.
Yeah.
Alderman Luraco.
How, pardon me. How is the funding impacted by the ongoing state budget difficulty?
From my, from my conversations with Fairgram, this source of funding, for whatever reason, has not been impacted. It's still been available.
Thank you.
And that availability, John, as far as you know, includes the dispersment of the funds?
The, the way the program works is, it's my understanding, it's a reimbursement program. So, as bills were to come in, we would process them through the city and then seek reimbursement from the state.
Other questions? Alderman Favor.
So, Phase Three, the bridge over the tracks, that's wide enough today to support the four lanes?
Right now, the bridge itself could manage the four lanes over the top. The approach from the north side is where there's a taper, and additional lanes would have to be added on that side. But the bridge itself, the width, would support two-lane traffic both directions.
Other questions, discussion? Okay, the purpose this evening then is to introduce the project, John?
That's right. So-
We'll see more detail as it evolves.
Yeah, I'm, I'm expecting in the next, maybe the next council meeting that we'll be bringing forward the application for the Economic Development Program.
Okay. And you'd be seeking any input for that development this evening, if there are questions or concerns from council?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll ask you to proceed, and we'll look forward to that, coming back to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. The next topic is the explanation of the new utility bill. I'll turn to Bob Miller from our finance department.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. As you know, we've been working on outsourcing the water bill printing. And with that, staff has been working with the printer on designing a new, a new look of the utility bill. I don't know if they're going to be able to bring it up, but you should be able to see that. I think I put it in the, there it is. Going out, we're trying to get this, it's scheduled to be overshoot for April billing, so in the next couple of days. Along with the, the new water bill that will go out, you'll still get a, a reply envelope in order to return your payment for the convenience of the resident. And along with that will be this utility bill explanation, kind of explaining the new look of the bill. It will be an eight and a half by eleven piece of paper. It's kind of bigger than what is currently being sent out. As you can see, the explanation will have a, a look of the bill in the, off in the lower right side, and kind of just going over, kind of pointing out to the residents, all the, you know, where to find their, you know, their account number, where their reading will be, where their usage will be. Hopefully, making everything easier to read and easy identifiable, and kind of putting more information on it. You see midway down, there's a bulletin board there. Currently, with the limitations of the software, we have like a couple lines where we can throw information in on a, to the, can give to the residents. This free form is, gives us a lot more capability to add announcements or upcoming events as long, and, you know, alerts through water billing as well. Next to that, there is a section that's also going to have your last, I think it's six usage amounts. So, a resident could look back and see kind of what their usage has been the last six bills, which hopefully will, you know, kind of give them a little history, you know, in case maybe, you know, that summer bill that is usually high, they could probably look back and see, oh yeah, my usage during last summer was about the same amount, even though it's not what I've been paying the last two bills. So, it kind of gives them a little information. The bottom is the stub. It's pretty much the same thing, you know, the logo, the scan line, and it'll have the dollar amount due. So, pretty much, that's it. That is, you know, we're trying to give them a little more information. Being that it's going to be eight and a half by eleven, it is going to be a little easier to read. And that's about, I guess about it for the, I guess, the, the front of the bill. The back of the bill, if you could switch screens, the back of the bill currently had nothing on it. So, this is just a bunch of information we wanted to get out to the residents and just give them information that they previously didn't have. A lot of it was from questions we may have been answering in, in water billing. As you can see, there's, like, if you were moving, you know, where, who to contact, or if there, you know, kind of go through the late payment penalty, or how to pay, or mentioning the drop box outside City Hall, where is it located? If you have a high-water bill, you know, maybe, you know, kind of give you some information on how to, how to check that. Or, you know, if you can't, then there's a, an information or a number there to call. So, it kind of gets you directed to the right person in the right department. And at the bottom, there's a, just, you know, places you can pay, how to pay, where to pay, and kind of directing some people to the website, you know, all the information is out there as well. So, we're trying to give them as much information as possible in their hands on a, on a basis, on a billing basis. So, any questions?
Bob, my understanding is we've been working with the sanitary district on an intergovernmental agreement for settling collections and reimbursement to the sanitary district. Will that intergovernmental agreement effect be represented on this new billing?
Not the reimbursement to the city, no. That will be on the, on the bill as well. Whatever the customers pay, the sewer charges, that actually gets turned over to the, to the sanitary district. But then we are getting a, is it quarterly?
We're going to invoice through our accounts receivable program, the sanitary district for doing their billing services. That's completely outside of the scope of the water bill. Now, we pulled that out of the rate. So, the sewer rate you see on here is just for the sewer, and the water rate's just for the water, so.
And that's totally transparent, that intergovernmental agreement is transparent to our, our citizens and residents?
It's no longer hidden, incorporated into the sewer or water charges where it had been in the past. So, now, we are mailing an actual invoice to the sanitary district from the city and collecting that monthly, that dollar amount over the twelve months.
Okay. So, what you're representing is the water and sewer charge on here will be a lot more representative of the actual utilization?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Other questions of Bob or Alderman Favor?
I, I, the, the new bill looks good. I like the inclusion of the past six bills. On the bottom of the last page, it does say to, you can pay by credit card online, or you can sign up for automatic payments, but you have to come in and fill out a form or call. Or is there plans to move that online for automatic billing?
We do have that form on our website, so you can download it off the website. We don't necessarily, because there's check information and routing number information on there, we do like to have it in person. We are in the process of changing our whole online bill payment process to try to incorporate some of that and streamline it a little more.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, thank you, Bob. And thank you for the work represented in the new billing as we see it rolling out. Thank you. Moving on, public participation. Michael Hajishik.
Thank you, Council. Dear Council, I'm here to address you a serious issue of trust, and I, and I think I've constantly come up with the same basic issues of trust. Bill, I actually owe you an apology. At one point, I thought you were somehow knowledgeable about College Town Partners ahead of time. But as the FOIA data has come in, it shows that Bill Fanoukian really didn't know anything about it. So, I apologize for that. This is clear because in an email sent from John Ray on April sixth, twenty fourteen, he's explaining if there's a speculation on John Harrison activity, a legitimate response is that there's conversations on public-private interest and the future development of the neighborhood. In other words, what he's saying is basically, this is what's going on, you don't know. And I understand that now. Well, you didn't know John was intimately involved with the writing and editing of the College Town Partners LLC document. Well, that was contrary to all the newspaper articles at the time, when the city and Anne-Marie both said, we didn't have anything to do with it. This was a private company that came in and wanted to talk to us about. What turns out, so here's an email from John. "Bill, Anne-Marie," Bill is Bill Nicholas, "attached as a draft piece explaining the intended redevelopment initiative on John Harrison Street Neighborhood. Tim and I are collaborating on a refinement to this piece. The mission and purpose of the partnership is too stilted in our view. Tim is working to simplify it into possibly two bullets in place of the narrative. Tim will share his refinements with us." Well, that's kind of interesting, because when you get to that point, it says that there's interaction, more than just casual interaction. And so, when you, when you are a citizen and you're approaching your public body, you expect them to, you know, even if they're giving you a little bit of smoke up your tailpipe, that they're doing it in a truthful way. So, attached email from Tim Struthers in twenty thirteen, fourteen. And by the way, all of these came in a recent FOIA because there was a claim that the, the search went- FOIA because there was a claim that the, the search went and picked up. All these have attachments saying College Town Partners on them. "First, I'm delighted that the city of DeKalb is considering to match the initial NIU investment. I know the NIU and COD will take some time to get final approval and money to transfer, but I would ask both to work as fast as possible to get there before I need the fund. That said, we will not let an opportunity escape us before the closures become available, before all approvals are finalized." So, it's clear that John, Anne-Marie, Dean have been spending the last two years hiding much of this material and forcing us to go FOIA after FOIA after FOIA to dig out. I have so, I have learned more about the FOIA law, thank you guys, than I've ever really wanted to know ahead of time. I've had to play, I had to read the law, I had to go through and deal with RFRs, which are referrals to the PAC, and it's been a lot of work. It takes, it's like having a third job. The search terms in the email, Garret, says it turns out, find these emails? It would have. The staff has insisted, there's no reason that we are FOIAing the city, and there's nothing to find. Well, I could stand here and read all the newspaper accounts line by line, detail the public untruths, but I don't have to. Your personal friends, John, funded the work of College Town Partner. Doug Roberts and Tom Matia spent $100,000, and some of that was for College Town Partners. And I learned a lot of this by going to NIU and getting a FOIA from NIU. I have FOIAed all of Bill Nicholas's conversations with Doug Roberts and Tom Matia. It's quite interesting, it's a very interesting read. I got two folders this thick, and a lot of it's back and forth about Neighborhood Three and College Town Partners. So, in this email says, "Having said all of this, I'm extremely interested in helping find solutions to the complicated issues I believe that this project is attempting to address." This is Doug Roberts to Bill Nicholas. "With the right set of objectives and people involved, I would be willing to consider unprecedented for me levels of funded, funding. This project, as I think I understand, it needs the city of DeKalb, NIU, retailers, student housing owners, and various other stakeholders to step up and be proactively involved in real change. I'll be positive of NIU and DeKalb. I think and understand the potential of the path to get the solution and this journey, and I know it'll be critical for you, Bill Nicholas, to be a leader initiative." So, he's willing to give un, let's see, what's that word again? Let's see. "With the right set of objectives and people involved, I'll be willing to consider unprecedented for me levels of funding." Well, the other thing he says in the same email is he's not interested in poor people in this housing. He's only interested in if it's for basically a little bit more profitable. It says, "However, I'm not in this about providing affordable housing for low to moderate income people. I am extremely reluctant to participate in owning and potentially operating rental property to students while the balance of the plan, the balance of the plan, becomes reality." Now, this wouldn't have been found without FOIA, and open government is an important part, because what it needs is that those people like myself could also be involved in looking at what is going on in city government. I am spending a significant amount of my personal fortune, my earnings every year, to fund the city government, and I find that it is a very closed city government. And it's a management team that is afraid of openness. And I don't mean Police Department, I don't mean the Fire Department, I mean the city manager's office that's afraid of openness. And so, I want to know if Doug, John, is helping Doug Roberts make money here. This is why I believe the information's withheld. This looks bad, whether he was or not. Anybody could casually look at this and see that his friendships are involved in basically moving $100,000 to the NIU Foundation, funneling money through the NIU Foundation to do commercial development. This is what, if this is what college-town interaction is, I personally want no part of it. It smells. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Mayor, could I just add, in regards to the last comments, the city issued a press release in May 2014 in relation to College Town Partners, and the information is put out there nearly two years ago. So, I think, I believe we've addressed it. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. All right, we have opportunity to move into executive session. I would entertain a motion for approval to hold executive session to discuss collective bargaining as provided for in 5ILCS 120/2C2, and approval to hold the exec, an executive session to discuss purchase or lease of real property as provided for in 5ILCS 120/2C5. Is there a motion? Moved by Alderman Lareco, second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markort, roll call, please.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Okay. We will reconvene as close to 6 o'clock as we can.